Kennedy's flash drive is here.
It's your flash drive or yours? All right, the morning, everybody. It is Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty four. And County Court is in session for a public hearing. I had to discuss and hear from the public on the funding for the library. Sure, we're recording here. Start. So again, August seventh, twenty twenty four. Harney County courtroom, public hearing for. Harney County Library Funding. So let's start off. With opening remarks from the county court and. And then we'll move into. Comments from the public. I would ask that I've got the. List here, there's probably another one out there will sign up. If you want to speak, please make sure that you're on the list and it's identified that you want to speak. If you're planning on speaking this evening when we read. Reconvene. You might want to wait until then. If anybody that's here this afternoon or this morning spoke this morning. I'm going to ask that you wait until people that haven't spoke. If you want to speak again in the evening, so. You know, just to conserve time. All of it will be on the same record. We're gonna have, you know, it'll be a continuation this evening, so the comments that are made today now. And comments this evening will be on the record, the same record. I would ask that keep your comments to three minutes. And. Remember to be respectful and polite to each other as the county court will be to you. With that in mind, I'm gonna open up, I'll start with the. This is not a. A library. Targeted. Library issue, this is a budget issue for the county. This is an issue that with decreasing revenues. All departments are gonna come out under review. This is not a new topic with the library. And budget sessions over the last several years, the library budget has always been a topic of discussion. It was determined or found out during this year's budget cycle. That per statute. If the county. Is going to abolish. The library or withdraw support. That count that public hearings had to be held. Consultation with our county council. Consultation with our county council was advised that any reduction in funding. That would affect services should follow this format and have these public hearings, so that's why we're here today. I will preface that, though, with with the statement that it is not the county court's intention to abolish. Or to withdraw total support from the library. That is not our intent, our intent is to find cost savings to allow the county to continue. With other budgeted needs in years to come. I have conducted some analysis of. Of the county budget revenues. And the library expenditures. And over the past fourteen years, the county revenues have increased at about three point one percent. The revenue, the expenditures for the library have, on average, every year have increased five point. Five percent, it's by five point zero one, I think we're losing, but five percent. This herein lies the the issue at that kind of a continued. At that kind of a continued pace. It's not sustainable, it's not sustainable for our entire budget. So that's why we're here today. I received a lot of letters, a lot of emails. The newspaper articles and all of them have been copied and. And put into the agenda packet for today's meeting, so they're a part of the record. We. We're looking for for some creative ideas and hopefully maybe some of that will come out in these public hearings. On sustaining the library's current services. I don't think that. Minimal reductions in staff. Would affect any of the major. Services that are provided by the. By the. Library. Some of the ones that in most of the emails and everything that were. Received. Include. Ready to read, these are children's programs. Preschool outreach battle. Of the books. And exam proctor. Internet access, computers, portable hotspots. Library of things, food service items. And and books and movie rentals. There's no reason that any and all of that shouldn't continue. Some ideas that come to mind are. Maybe a volunteer program that would maybe need volunteers, just a few hours a week. More aggressive grant funding searching. I've prepared and analyzed and I've got a meeting set up with the foundation for Monday. To look at the grants that they have applied for in the last ten years. I can only attest to what is in the budget and what's been on the budget in the last fourteen years that I've done an analysis of. And there's not very many grants on there. And there's a lot out there. There are. At least six grants right here from a simple Google search. That could have been used or applied for for the library. And a couple of them were passed on to the library, just for reference, just to show what's out there. I'm not seeing that. So I think that that's an option, and that's maybe one of the resolution or. Options for continuing forward. So. There's a lot to discuss here. The way I'm looking at this today again is we're opening comments, we'll hear from anybody that wants to speak today. And then we're gonna recess at twelve o'clock. And continue reconvene this evening at six o'clock up in the county court or the circuit court courtroom. So I think that's about all I have in summary right now, Mr. Schuman.
Yeah, you know, I do appreciate the attendance today because I think that this is. I wish we could get this kind of level of attendance at all of our budget meetings for the county. You all live here, you all contribute to the tax base here. You need to have a better understanding of what is going on in your county, what is going on with the tax revenues for the county, what is going on with the lack thereof. We all know that the county suffered a budget crisis here and just the last rearview mirror. You know, and and that concerned a lot of folks and it should have. Sadly, until an issue like this comes, we don't get the kind of participation and attendance. When it comes to financial matters for the county. And I'd really like to strongly encourage more people to participate. In that bigger picture, not just in one department of the county. As we look at, since I became a commissioner about four years ago. Things that the county stands in need of. And this is that bigger picture piece. There are administrative duties that we don't have backup for and essential roles. That puts us in a very bad situation, we have a staff member that fulfill some of these roles. And they had some sort of illness come upon them or something happened to them, there is no one trained. Or prepared to step into that role, take that duty up and make this county function for essential services. That is scary from my seat. If we don't have the kind of cross training and availability to make sure that essential duties of the county. Are in place. I'm not doing my due diligence in my role. And so when we look at budgetary matters, I need you to make sure that you're also looking at it from that perspective. This isn't a one off of. We don't support the library, I took my kids to Miss Lisa's. When she was in that role, when they were that age, the library is an essential function of the county for, you know, helping kids develop. That's not what this matter is about, what this matter is, is the overall budget of the county, the constraints that we're facing and us doing our due diligence to make sure that we can keep a balance of that. And as we're seeing with the outpacing of what we're bringing in, as well as knowing that there's some tax accounts, and this will be that next bigger picture that. I'd hope you would all be just as concerned about. Is we're currently under the Division five twelve rulemaking process for the groundwater portion of this basin. If you guys want to have a good understanding of what that is, that means that we're over allocated in this basin for our water usage. That. That comes back to our overall economy. When you look at our tax base and the suffering that we could have within our tax base of not receiving tax revenue because you have. The things that are generating that revenue get either shut off, shut down, reduced. Within the next couple of years. That puts everything we're planning on budgetarily on its head. We can't even at this point in time. And and we're halfway through the rules making process. Definitively say what that impact can look like for this town. We have one tax account right now that is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they cannot pay their taxes. Because of this water issue. That's just one account in this county.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over two years, it's one and a half million total.
And right now they don't have a path forward for being able to generate that kind of money. To pay their taxes. That is just one entity. And so when we're looking at what we're considering budgetarily, it's a. Problem that we can't even project the impact of. And so we are being very cautious in our budget. And in the way we're approaching it and trying to make any adjustments we can along the way with what we do know at this point in time. This is just one of those adjustments that we in our roles do have to make. And it's not cutting support of the library completely, but it's adjusting that support in a way that we feel is financially sound for the county. Knowing that all departments, given our. Future economic drivers being very, very impacted by this process by the state. There could be a lot more reduction in services and other things that will have to happen in this county in order for it to continue to function. Like I say, since I came on, I I've seen gaps in essential services that we aren't even providing and and being sound about. That is a difficult decision that you have to make. But we have to make those decisions, and so please keep in mind that there is no lack of support for the library in what it does. It does great things for this community, is it is a absolute gem of what they're able to do and what they do it with. Obviously, other counties have much larger budgets and can do so much more. Harney County is a frontier rural community. And we have very limited resources to operate on. When you have seventy eight percent of your landmass tied up in federal land and you only get one point two million dollars in compensation for that. That's pretty tough to budget off of. That leaves you with very little wiggle room with your current tax base plus your payments and lieu of taxes. And so know that we do have a lot of vegetarian constraints that we are trying to be very conscious of. And this is just one part of that, other other budgets and departments. Receive the same kind of review and scrutiny. There's no one that isn't being looked at of what is essential, what is not. Where can we grow in a positive way for this community and provide the best services possible? Where do we need to add things that will create that backup that I mentioned earlier? That would ensure that we don't have problems in being able to function in those essential services. But I do, like I say, thank you guys for being engaged today. But be aware that there are a lot of heavy issues in this county that we're facing right now that I would love to see just as much engagement on. There's the forest planning effort that is also going on that impacts this county. They have public meetings as well, there was great support here in Harney County for that, but those are also things that impact us economically. When you have federal agencies and partners make policy decisions. That has a local economic impact every time. And so, you know, there's a lot of things that locally we can weigh in on right now. That's one of them, there's going to be further meetings held here in Burns, when you see that, please participate. I know you all love your natural resources in this county. It's it's a an asset to us. But not if policies impact us in negative ways, and so we need positive. Interaction in those areas as well, stay engaged in the water rulemaking process, it really is going to impact you directly in one way or another. You know, these are all things that I really hope people can. Try to find out more about so that you too can make decisions that are best for you. In your future and your needs. And your family, you know, we have insurance issues going on as well with the. Fires, we saw on the west side when there was all those fires. When renewals came around with insurance companies, many of you were impacted by that, many of you had a thirty to ninety percent rate increase if you weren't dropped. There are a lot of things that we face here in these local communities. And where we are. They can make it hard just to get by. And those are things that, you know, as commissioners, we tried to lay in on with the state, we're trying to find a path forward to work on your be path for. But there are things that affect you economically, and so this is just one area that we are, you know, trying to make sure that you're aware of. That we do have to make some adjustments to a budget, but there are also a lot of other areas where we spend our time and effort in trying to make sure that we. Represent you and try to make positive impacts on you for your future as well as ourselves, so that's my comments for today.
Mine will be a little shorter. But I appreciate what Commissioner Schuman said because I'm going to touch on some of these kind of in a different way and I'm going to stick to my script because I want to hear from you guys, and we all do. But thank you very much for being here and for those who will come tonight. We know, but we want to even hear more how important our library is across so many of the aspects. I, we agree. I am the county court representative to the Harney County Library Advisory Board, and I'm also a very active. User of the library, we have a wonderful library, it serves a lot of purposes. The big picture, unfortunately, the Harney County budget is stretched very thin, this is the result of many years and decades. Of a trend of declining revenues with no significant prospect of sustainable change to reverse that trend. The lack of a large living wage employer. Declining state funding and the static and insufficient federal payments such as she mentioned, payment in lieu of taxes, pilt and secure rural schools. These payments have hardly gone up, certainly not in relative terms over the years. That leaves us where we have to reduce and stabilize our expenditures across all county services in a way that has never, we have never had to do before. Our deliberations and budget planning will be considering all county services and departments, not just only, not. Just and only the library. The Harney County Court and the Harney County Budget Committee will be very carefully and very transparently considering and deliberating. On how to budget under this scenario. Where we simply do not have sufficient funds to keep services and payroll at the current levels across the board. Unless something unexpected and favorable occurs, which we are not anticipating. We are moving forward with public hearings. Conversations and public work sessions. In the months to come, in order to best prepare ourselves and the community for likely budget cuts. We want the community to understand the situation. And we do not want to wait until. The beginning of the new calendar year to help create that awareness. All departments will be evaluated, not only the library. However, we are fulfilling our obligation for libraries under O R S three five seven point six two one by having these specific hearings. Which applies only to libraries. With so many people that care about the library. Like Judge Hart said, you know, your ideas, your creativity, things, ways to keep the library sustained. Beyond the county contribution to it, that's the kind of stuff where the work's going to have to begin in the future. Unlike our other county departments, however, the library does have some resources such as the Harney County Library Foundation. Which manages the large financial endowment for the library. And library patrons and supporters have options such as seeking voter approval to create a special taxing district for the library if you. Want to do that, if you can get the support for that. Our other county departments don't have such options. Those are different. Some people have suggested to us that surely there are other cuts. That can be made in the budget, maybe a little here, maybe a little there to help prevent reduced funding to the library or to other county departments. But we have been doing that for the past six years since our county budget crisis every year. And we have now hit the wall. We have hit the wall on that approach. Nobody wants to cut employees. Regarding another suggestion, trying again for a county transient lodging tax to be voted in by the people. We can certainly consider referring that to the voters again, the county court has already placed it on the ballot twice. This didn't didn't pass either time, and the second time it was on the ballot that received less support than the first time, and that's a source where you're taxing. Visitors who come and use the motels and hotels, it doesn't hurt our residents as much, but. There's different views on that. Perhaps that could be approved with better advanced publicity and more community awareness of just how dire the county finances are. A transient lodging tax could provide some funding to our budget that would be helpful, but it won't solve our big, big picture issue. And now the wildfires we are experiencing are having a devastating impact on many of our fellow ranchers and property owners. Loss of assessed value of their property will likely mean proration of county property taxes from them in the future as appropriate. Which will further decrease county revenues. So this is, this is a trend that isn't about to change and it's. It's not like we can do something this year and fix it, we've got to all look. Into the future. County finances have never been so scrapped. Our relative revenues do not keep pace with ever increasing levels of expenditures. And so we're going to be focusing now listening on the library because that's what you're here for, but I just felt is very important. As we start getting this information more and more understood in the community to provide you with that outlook, not to be negative, but to be realistic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. So. In the packet, the agenda packet that goes along with this with this hearing. I've added some resource documents. The budget, copy of the budget and analysis. Of all the departments and funds that receive funding from the general fund, the library is a general fund department. And and how that's broken down and the library is the sixth. Sixth largest recipient of funds from the general fund. There's a bar graph and a and a pie chart, it equates to out of out of. Thirty one different recipients of funds, whether it be funds or department. The library's portion of it is five percent of the budget. The jail is the top, the sheriff's office, the assessor's office, et cetera, so anyway, that's included in there. There's an analysis of the library's expenditures and revenues over the last fourteen years. There's. An analysis of the general fund. Revenues. There's an analysis of grants that have been received and budgeted within the the library over the last fourteen years. And there's also a comparison of other libraries throughout the state, this is pretty extensive list of libraries throughout the state. And their populations, their. Their revenues, their operating budgets, et cetera. And that's all within that packet. So. I would, I would also extend that leading up to this meeting. I've had one email request for actual questions, I've had emails, you know, in support of the of the library. But I haven't had but one email asking actual questions about what is happening, what's going on, why are we having these meetings? My door is open. I'm gonna extend that today, my door is open. If you don't feel like you what you got today or out of the next meeting is sufficient. Then then come in and talk to me. And we can look at the budget and I can show you where we're at. So with that said. I'm going to open it up. To. Public comment. And take care of the. Take care of the people in the room first. I would ask, well, I'm gonna go down this list. If you didn't sign up and indicate that you would like to speak today. And I would ask too, like I mentioned earlier, that if you speak now and you want to speak again this evening, that's fine, but if you've already spoke now, I'm gonna ask you to wait till the end. Of of this evening and other people that haven't had a chance to speak. So I'm gonna go through this list. Did everybody that wants to speak get signed up on the list and indicate so? I'd ask too that you keep your comments to three minutes so we can get through this. First individual that indicated was Doug D. Fur, Mr. Fur, do you want to speak now or this evening?
Well, I want to speak this evening, I have just one question for clarification. And then I'll continue this evening. The letter that's coming from the Harding County Court. Dated April the eleventh, twenty twenty four of the. Budget message, is that current, it's part of the approved and. Adopted budget, is that correct?
Yes, the budget message that went out with the budget.
Okay, if you look at that section four, paragraph four. Not section four, there is no section. Paragraph four, it has breakdown of the county's. Employee numbers. And when you get to the library, it says six. And it's been five point two five for quite a while. But also the thing that I want to know is. When you add them all up, I come up with a hundred and nine. And you have written a hundred and four.
So. Part of what happens there on that form is you can't put decimals in. So instead of going with five. Which the actual is five point two five, it rounds, it round, I just round them up. It's a generally generalized summary.
Okay.
Of of FTEs in the county.
Round it up from five point two five to six?
Well, that and all the other ones that go along with it, the other half halves and three quarters and everything else ends up. Ends up taking it up.
What about the total of the total county employees at hundred and four, when you add it up, there's a hundred and nine.
Same thing. Same thing, when some of them are are five and a half or some of them might be a half or a three quarter FTE. Or. Three quarter and a half, however, that all adds up. It rounds up versus, because I can't put in a decimal, it won't let me put in in that form, it won't let me put in five point two five, so it's just a summary of. Approximation of of what our FTE is. Is that form I think that you're talking about, is that in the letter?
Message that's on top on the opening for the budget.
Okay, because the form itself. There's a summary.
It's a budget message itself.
Okay, and I probably took those numbers off of that forum then is how that got on there, because I fill out that summary form, the budget summary form. Next year, I'll make sure to make sure it reflects accurately. But the true, the true FTE in the library is five point two five.
And the the true overall number of employees is one hundred and four.
That sounds about, yeah. I would have to double check my, you know, the other, the other information, but that probably sounds about right.
There was some discussion, I don't know if you were at that budget meeting or not, but with H R, we had some discussion on that, and she gave us some updated numbers on that. It in my budget binder, so I don't have it in front of me, but there was some further discussion during the budget process on that, where we got some different answers. To that where she gave us current. Numbers, because there was some questions around that, so that's something that we could, you know. Ask Deanna to pull up for us. Ask Deanna to pull up for us. And share if there's any interest in that number versus that budget time versus current, it, it does fluctuate some.
Thank you.
Um, next person that is indicated that I'd like to speak is, is it Mark or Mac?
Mark.
Mark?
Yeah.
Um, please state your full name or at least your first and last name.
If you can read it, yeah.
Yeah.
Mark House.
There you go, thanks, sir.
Um, well. We drove two hundred, we're gonna drive two hundred and thirty miles round trip or through fields. And that's how important this is to me. Uh, so my daughter Sam, she's an educator, uh, I'm a. Retired broadcaster, I do freelance writing, et cetera. Um, I was under the impression from an initial county notification, and tell me if I'm wrong, I thought. The initial intent of this meeting was to discuss withdrawing support. Or defunding the library altogether, is that not correct?
That is not correct.
That is not correct. Then I don't have very much to say. I am heartened to know that, uh, support will continue and understand the need that small cuts may need to be made, but. I was under an incorrect impression that support was gonna possibly be withdrawn altogether, so that's all I'm saying.
Well, and, and the statute does have language around that.
Okay, so I wasn't totally.
Confused when you read the statute, why we're required to have the hearing, that is part of the statute.
Okay. Okay.
Which we don't write.
No, I got, but I thought I saw even the word withdraw or defund.
Yeah, if you, if you read the total statute language, that language is.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Um. Next individual is. Sammy. That was you?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you good then, or did you?
Oh, I'm good, yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Um, next individuals indicating they'd like to speak is Heather Moore. Please state your name for the record and your comment.
My name is Heather Moore. Um, I moved to Harney County three, three years ago and, um. I'm a current, um, headed into a PhD, I'm studying in Portland and living here when I'm not in school. And I've been a math teacher for many years. Um, I've also studied complex systems and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. About this thought process that I've noticed kind of in a more holistic systems perspective. Um, I thought it was very, um, interesting that so many of us have shown up for this reason. There are important things in a county's budget, and then there are important things that really speak to people's hearts. And I think this is maybe just a little light bulb moment for us as a community. To notice that if we're focusing on the challenge of making sure that our library can actually continue to grow and become even more special. Um, that, that challenge might motivate people to be more engaged in budget matters. Um, that are kind of less fun to think about. So. That was just one thing I thought was important to point out. Um, I think that. It prioritizing nurturing a place like a library can actually. Kind of be a safeguard for a community to make sure that there's enough of those harder to quantify things that enrich a community. Um, so I would be cautious as we're considering reducing funding for the library to make sure that the things that are cut. Um, they might not be essential services that we all think of, like the internet and those programs for kids. But what effects will they have and will those effects kind of have? Um, you know, uh. Ripples in the community that would actually kind of gradually decrease our flourishing as a whole. Um, and if so, maybe we should emphasize more things like the volunteer program ideas and. Land writing and just making sure that we're focusing the funding that we have for the library on things that are going to make it sustainable.
Thank you very much. Um. Yeah. And also just for everybody's information, we are recording the Zoom today, so this will be available. Will be available on accounting Zoom or YouTube website. Um. Next individual is Tom Wallace?
Yeah. Um. Sorry, we're even having this meeting, it's a shame. Um, the library is the most important investment in this county. That's why families come. It'll come here for the roads, obviously. There's a lot of things they don't come here for, the library is important. Um, Harney County Library serves this county as another public structure. And it's affordable for everyone, every individual, which cannot be said for all of your public facilities. It's family oriented. Um, intern Kennedy's short video has shown how important our library is. And how large and wide a group is served by. I understand that you guys are, this is about money. The library isn't. It's about art, it's about families. This isn't a monetary of, you know, option. The library is that important. I, I don't know any other way to make it clear. And you guys are talking about water. I got friends that moved out of here because you can't take care of the damn water, pardon my language. Um. You got people out here sucking water up. Making money. Charge them. And volunteering, one child, one charitable public employee, take a one percent volunteer. Like you're doing as people do for the library. Um, those people are barely making a living wage as it is. So cutting them seems really unnecessary and crazy to me. I'm not trying to denounce you guys, I think you're doing the best job you can, especially after that four million fiasco will all back. But. Please don't take it out of the library.
Thank you, sir. Um. Next that indicated they wanted to talk was Kate Marsh.
Yes.
Well, I'm certainly. Here to support the library. Um, I think it is one of the most valuable assets that we have for all of our county community. And for me, it's not just being able to check out a book or get a, uh, a way to. Get on the internet or just see a movie, but it's. It's the, it makes the whole aspect of literacy in the county more approachable. I'm not saying that our school teachers aren't doing their best. But. I believe that our, that our library contributes significantly. To the possibility of having a, a county population that is literate. That can read, that can read many different kinds of things. Not just the things that your teachers talk to in school, that you can learn to write. Not just. Letters to your grandmother, although I wish my kids would do more of that, um. But that you can write intelligently. That you can write in ways that help you become a public servant. A chairman of a board. A, um, captain of industry. The, the ways that people can use the library are very important. And, and if it takes being able to have internet access to get them into the library to see what else is available. That to me is not unlike having the captains of industry come and talk to. To high school students so that they know the kinds of jobs that are available out there in the world that they can't see here. You need to have things available, accessible. And I understand. Quite, um, definitely what you're saying about the budget, overall budget. And I'm not critical at all of the way you're using the county funds. But I'm just making a plea for the importance of the library in our community. Be, partly because we're frontier and we aren't able to go to larger institutions to see what's there. If I, if my kids were here, if my grandkids were here, if my great grandkids are here. I wouldn't want them all the time to be on their phones learning things. I wouldn't want them all the time on TV or computer learning things. I'd want them to see what things look like in their hands, or what the great authors have, or what the great. Uh, uh, institutions can provide. One last thing on the subject of grants. Uh, it's my understanding that you cannot get a grant just for operational support for a library. So that's just one point. Second point is. Although you have presented the possibility of applying for six grants that you looked at. I'm, I will challenge you to also understand the grants that a library has applied for, which may be those. That they have not been able to receive for one thing or another, because there's, there's. A, a lot of requests for, for funding, I ask for funding for my art center all the time, a lot of requests. Lot of us out there asking for it, so we don't always get what we're asking for. So you need to investigate that part too, just to make sure you're seeing that whole picture.
And, and I don't want to interrupt you, but I, but I am, and that's part of my, uh, like I said, I have a meeting with the foundation on Monday. To review what they've applied for, what they have gotten, what they haven't gotten, um. Anyway, so let you please convene.
Well, just, uh, again, on the subject of literacy, um. It's in, in, in my mind, it's also like the world of, of artistic expression. We have to let our. Our offspring know the whole wealth of ways to express themselves artistically. They can't learn it all in school, they have to see it on other places, part of that's the library. And that's an important, um, um, um. An important place, a, an important collection of, of ways for them to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up on here and wants to speak?
Okay, I'd like to just make one comment. My name is Mike Liosa. I comprise twenty-five percent of the Harney County Library Foundation Board. And about one minute ago was the first time I learned of this, uh, meeting they're gonna have on Monday. Um. So I would encourage you to schedule it, uh, a different day and inform the entire board of it, so that we can all attend. I won't be able to attend on Monday. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so the, the meeting I have on Monday, I spoke, spoke to, um, Mr. Flippens.
Mm-hmm.
And I asked him, you know, who would be the best, you know, just to talk about or convene or discuss the grants. And, um, he said he has all the information, so we just, I just scheduled it with him. If the board itself would like a further follow-up meeting after that, I'm more than willing to do that. Um, part of what I see happening, just a brief, um, interjection here. Is after this meeting, we have ninety days and we have to have another one. And during that ninety days, this research and, and analysis and, uh, conversations, individual conversations will continue. And then we'll come back again in that ninety days for the next meeting, so I, I'm more than, more than willing to schedule a, a, a full meeting. Or we could even do it as a work session with the county court, however that looks like.
All right, sounds good. I will save my further comments for this evening.
Okay. Um, so anybody else in the room in attendance?
Sure.
Okay. Um, before you leave though, can you make sure that you sign on or put on here and indicate that you wanted to speak?
I'm on a list, but I didn't indicate I wanted to speak.
Okay.
And this is just, my name is Lynn McLean Talkin, kind of in response to literacy. I was walking today and I shared the photo with you. On the trail, on the bird platform, some horrific, horrific graffiti. Uh, that is not the kind of literacy we want. We want people. Young people to have critical thinking skills. So they can discern what's offensive and what isn't. What's hateful and what isn't, and a library. Is a place that will nurture that and our schools, I agree. It comes from those public positions, institutions. And I was just appalled, appalled. By the hateful marks and I don't know if the judge shared with you, he said he's known about it since Monday. And it needs to be covered up as quick as possible. Um, this thing happened back in twenty sixteen as well. And, um. I don't know if it's an election cycle thing, but it is vile. And I hope it's covered up within the next twenty-four hours. Uh, thank you.
Just as I had mentioned to you, I, I received an email with pictures, um. Monday, I believe it was, and I reached out immediately to the roadmaster, Mr. Duchella, who was here earlier. And he, uh, was gonna go by and take a look at it and see if I'm getting it clean or painted over.
This is county.
Yeah, it's along the, uh, walking trail. All right, I'm gonna move on to online, uh, attendees. Um, obviously I don't have, uh, people signed up for, um, from online if you'd wish to speak. But I would ask that you raise your hand if you do, and then I will call upon you. Anybody online that would like to speak, address the county court? And I know I get technically issues on these things too, so if you can't find the hands up, just speak up then. Right, well, not seeing anybody online. Um, I was gonna make note of the ORS that brought us here today. Uh, it's ORS three five seven point six two one.
Mr. Char, I used to have a question tonight, when we meet at six o'clock.
Yes.
You've already explained, all three of you have spoken about your concerns, so it'll be ongoing and we will just start with the public.
Um.
I want to know, it took like a half hour today. For you guys, I, I looked up there.
I, I want to make comments again tonight.
But maybe could we sort of like you do ours, like within a certain amount of time?
No. I'm not gonna keep my comments to three minutes, I feel like the, the value that we add to the context of this.
I do it all the time too, we ramble. Though hardly been meeting, you know, with your J. Char, he seems to be rambling, but we just don't want more rambles.
Well, I, I don't think that anything we've shared today with you is rambling, I really do hope that you can take it to heart and, and realize. That there are very important issues in this county.
I don't, yeah.
This is just one of those that, you know, does pull at the heartstrings, but there's many other things that are very important.
I was offended because I think some of your explain of the budget and how we do it and everything. You act like we didn't know anything about budgeting, this is a personal thing of me, and then at the end I thought. Really, we do understand that, we know about the county, you know, I mean, how many people now have looked at the budget because of what has happened with the library? But we want you to prioritize your budget, that's what we want you to do. The, the library is what's so important right now. Because it is how people, I went to a couple of, you know, council meetings, and yeah, that came up with relatives, they said that. When people move birds, they check the library. People go to Heinz, they check the library.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir, state your name.
Pat Holliker, just out of curiosity, how many folks in here have done a serious analysis of the county's budget? One, two, three.
Maybe I'll sit sharing.
Yeah, so we got three people. Oh, yeah, right. Context matters when we make decisions. One has to go through and actually have all of the information to make the best decisions possible. I get the emotional side of things, but unfortunately. It's like with physical limitations, you have to live within them, that's just the reality of it, and we want a lot of things, I mean, I think we all do. But the reality is, is there are certain constraints outside of our capacity to control or influence. We have to just deal with those, like it sucks, I totally get it, trust me, I'm on multiple things in the county, I volunteer a lot. I know, and trust me, getting volunteers to actually show, people show with lots of concerns. Lots of ideas, but when it comes to actually getting involved, that's where it ceases almost. Lots of ideas, but when it comes to actually getting involved, that's where it ceases almost immediately, like there's no support for this stuff. And I'm a father of four, I'm a business owner, I don't have so much time and so much energy that I can donate. And at some point, if people aren't willing to step up and volunteer, some of that stuff is gonna go away. And one of those things that I have discovered in my own personal life, if people really want something, guess what they'll do? They will pay for it, number one, and number two, they'll show up and volunteer if they actually want. That's just my experience. And if we as a community want that, but unfortunately, we're seeing nationwide, there is all sorts of societal shifts. And values and priorities and all of that. And there's those of us that cherish certain things that are becoming, they're not popular anymore. They just aren't, especially with the advent of the internet, it's radically changed a lot of things, it's not the only thing by any means. But the capacity to access a wide range of information, and they. I agree, I'm a physical book person, I read a lot, like a lot. So I, I'm passionate about education and reading, when I say reading, I'm not reading fiction, I'm not, not fiction, but it's mostly. From science to business to personal finance, you name it, I'm a broad reader, not hating on the reading. But there's other sources and avenues now that are competing with a traditional breaking order that makes it difficult. So those are just my personal thoughts.
Yes, ma'am, state your name, please.
My name is Pat Sharp. Um, can I ask an informational question without giving up my opportunity to speak this evening?
Oh, yes, and, and I'm not, I'm not gonna preclude anybody from speaking this evening. I'm just gonna ask that anybody that spoke today, wait till the end, so the, the people who didn't have a chance.
This is just an informational, it's not an.
No, but you're, you'll be fine.
Have you um. Figured out yet? If your cuts will still. Put our library in a position to be accredited?
Yes.
Because that is a big deal, they can't apply for all those grants if they're not accredited.
So uh. Right now, the county funds sixty eight point two percent of the, of the uh, library budget. By statute, a public library has to be funded with at least fifty percent of public funds. So uh, yes, we have to keep that in mind, but uh. We don't know where we're going yet, but it's not gonna be, that's why I think uh. That, that is considered, yes, ma'am, you have to leave it at that, because I don't wanna say what we're looking at doing now, because we haven't really discussed what we wanna do now, or, or whatever. So that is. That is a concern and we'll make sure that it stays that way. Um, to be honest with you, I don't wanna go that deep myself, but we'll see what happens. Yes, ma'am, state your name, please.
My name is Erin Paray. Um, I live at here in the city and I volunteer my time to the library. So um. The reason why I volunteer my time is because I consider the library one of the most important places in this county. I do the once a month embroidery group uh, with, through the library. Um, I've. Taught other uh, classes through the library where they've approached me and asked me to teach something, and I have done so. I volunteer my time, I volunteer my finances in ways to help support the library. Is, I just consider it very, very important, and that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, thank you. All right, um, we're getting close to the hour. Um, unless there's anything that anybody really wants to say at this time. Then we will look at uh, recessing. Until this evening at six o'clock, where we will reconvene upstairs in the uh, Circuit Court courtroom. And we'll have the audio and visual, video uh, Zoom all set up and everything up there as well. So um. Anything else? Thank you all for your attendance. And uh, we look forward to seeing you again this evening, if you're available, thank you.
Nice meeting you.